I know we got to actually work now. All right, I'm going to call the city council work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Pitts.
Here.
Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Stare.
Here.
Councillor Woodrow and Councillor Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
And councillor Woodrow is excused for the evening. And we've got a couple of items today. First one, sports commissions committees discussion with Mayor Bridget Smith, and while you're loading that up. Normally, I just wanted to, I guess, acknowledge the fact that it's Indigenous Peoples' Day. And we did issue a resolution sort of supporting that. It you can find that on the website, since we're not at a regular session, I'm not going to read it into the record. All right. Mary Bridget.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to have a follow up discussion on boards, commissions and committees. This is follow up from some topics that came up at the council retreat in the spring. The packet tonight just has two attachments. The first attachment is the section of the operating policies and procedures that deals with boards and commissions, just to give you some framework for that kind of regulations around it. And then the second item is this PowerPoint on boards, commissions and committees. I know you have two other items tonight, so I just want to check in before I launch into the PowerPoint. If you would like to just start with discussion about questions, or if you want me to kind of tee things off with the PowerPoint, I just want to make sure you have enough time to provide your feedback. My thought on this information tonight is what I'm not necessarily looking for a specific direction about how to change your process. But whatever the issues are that came up, if there's a further way we can kind of deal with figuring out what that direction is, whether it's through like a subcommittee or another meeting back before the council, or however you want to work it. So anyway, just wanted to leave that to you first before I get going here on the slides.
Joe.
Well, actually, I was just, I would probably had you guys on slide nine, so.
You're on slide nine, okay.
Or should I?
I think get started and give us about thirty seconds.
I know, then you'll be in.
Go into a discussion for.
Okay, so just to kind of frame up the discussion here tonight, so we're talking about boards, committees and commissions. And this is a follow up from council retreat. Only in this instance tonight, we're talking about council committees. I know there are lots of other intergovernmental count, the commissions that you are members of, subcommittees, project related CCI committees, that's like your development code review committee, that kind of thing. And really tonight, what I'm trying to do is sort of tease out, what is the purpose of this committee and what's the council role there? What's the selection process? Because that seems to be, that's where there's more process around that. And then what is the role and experience for the person who is the committee volunteer? So looking at the next slide. This is just because I'm your lawyer, and I feel like I always got to have something legal in here, but here's the legal framework for boards, commissions and committees. So it is mentioned in the charter, it's quite brief as it should be. But it talks about how the job really is, the mayor points consistent with your rules. And you can also, mayors can also have mayoral committees. Some committees have statutory reference, so that would be your budget committee, planning commission, even library and historic commission do. And then your council operating policies and procedures, and then bylaws and Springfield municipal code. Moving on here, so what I tried to do with the rest of the slides is just kind of give some, think a little bit about these different committees, instead of just having them all kind of grouped into one group. So starting, I don't want to put like that one is more important than the other, but I did try and kind of figure out, okay, what, what are the different things that these committees do? So I thought I would start with the budget committee. This is a statutory committee, it's different than other committees that you have, and that the councillors are members of these committees. And then you appoint, there is, you know, the role of the budget committee is to approve the budget and taxes and conduct public meetings. So this is a committee that has a lot of interaction with the public in terms of process. We have an equal number of electors, that's qualified voters, there is a separate recruitment for this. So this is a little off track from the rest of your BCCs. High level of staff support here, so it's going to be a little different than another committee you might have where, you know, like a museum committee or other committees that had do a wide variety of items, this committee is really zeroed in on the budget. This often can be a stepping stone for elected office as well. And only meets during specific times of the year. Planning Commission is our next committee. This committee actually meets more often throughout the year, has a lot of regulatory. As you know, who have been on the planning commission before, has a lot of regulatory obligations in terms of land use process. It is generally part of our batch recruitment in the fall, but sometimes will go off depending on how many people or openings they have in that committee, because it's important that it keeps going. And runs at a full, full number of members. There's a council liaison, high level of staff support here, and what I mean by that are like, you know, staff reports, a lot of process for hearings, all that kind of stuff. I mean, there's a lot of interaction here between staff and the commission, and they make decisions that are really impactful for the city.
A question.
Sure.
I'm curious why somebody can't be on the planning commission and the budget commission at the same time.
Sure, so the operating policies and procedures state that, I think it's, and it's, there's a little more wiggle room, it says whenever possible, someone won't be on another governing body. And the planning commission or budget committee, so actually to be more accurate, that probably shouldn't be so explicit to say you can't be on one or the other, but that has been the practice over time. Perhaps that's related, I mean, that's an old thing, it could be related to the stepping stone, right, that you just want a little more variety in these two big committees, that's all I know.
And the commission, we've always said is, is homework for being a councillor eventually.
Yes, yes, definitely. The next committee is the CDAC, this is the committee who works on the home funds and the CDBG funds. And there is a councillor and a planning commissioner who sits on this committee. I believe this is part of your batch recruitment in the fall. And they meet more regularly, specific, very specific to a task. So different than another committee like a library advisory board or BPAC, that's meetings throughout the year to talk about things. And six residents within the UGB, so not necessarily just city of Springfield residents. Historic Commission is a committee, has statutory and Springfield municipal code and development code basis. These are folks who have stewardship of our historic assets. They do, similar to the planning commission, do review land use applications and make recommendations in some of their items. There is someone from DPW museum staff as ex officio members. This has a little different residency requirements and membership requirements than you might see in other committees, and again, they have a council liaison. And this one, remember, they have a connection to the Washburn Historic District.
Mary B.
Yeah.
So it seems as though planning and budget and CDAC are sort of elevated, so to speak. As bodies that you cannot be a member of two of. Is that?
That's true, the operating policies say, hey, we don't, that generally they want, I think it says whenever possible, someone's going to just be on one committee. And I think that's the try and get at that idea of variety throughout. And then there's that specific thing about planning commission and budget committee not being a member of another governing body.
But it's not written down anywhere, it's just a practice.
It's a practice that is recommended in your operating policies and procedures, but it's done in a way that gives you some flexibility.
All right.
So Leonard, we put it, yeah, we, we're the ones who put it in there, and those are probably circa, I don't know, maybe twenty fourteen.
Yeah.
And when, if, if my memory serves, we were just at a spot where we're having a lot of folks serve on multiple places at the same time.
Uh huh.
And we wanted to try to get at a way to try to guide us to a more, I guess, wider variety of folks.
But CDAC is not such a hard and fast rule.
Um, I think when I looked at the CDAC piece, the concern I would have with if we were talking about places where we had a liaison, right, is that it has a liaison to a committee that you're already on, right? So, and I, I, you know, I'm not sort of speaking for everybody, this is Sean's mind or at work here is that they have a planning commission liaison, and if somebody's on the, you know, to have half the planning commission sit on that committee wouldn't make any sense to me, because they already have somebody whose job it is to represent the planning commission.
Okay.
Go ahead, Joe.
Up on there too, is that the issue was, was specifically that. But also the council's concern, and still my concern to this day, is to make sure that members of the committees and commissions do not have a wide breadth of influence as opposed to having a greater breadth of influence from many more people. That's, that's the issue. So that's why we said, okay, your, your control or your advice or your input in this committee is great. But that same person shouldn't have that type of influence in another influential committee.
Go ahead, Corey.
Um, I, we've taken over now. Yeah, um, so.
Way to tee it up for us, Mary Bridget. It took seven minutes.
I think, I totally agree with trying to have as many different people involved as possible. And putting some, some parameters and some limitations. And I appreciate sharing the, the decision making around that was to try to kind of limit the decision making of non-elected folks, I think is a reasonable thing to do. And the one thing that I wanted to move into is, can we talk a little bit about the, the, just get really clear about the difference between a liaison and a councillor who has like a seat on a committee?
Sure. Okay, so CDAC is a good example of that, one councillor is on the CDAC is how it looks in it, right? I think that's councillor Mo right now, as opposed to liaison role, right? And so that's the one I think that does have, you know, this is an area where flexibility also kind of can result in some uncertainty, because when you're the liaison, and depending on the committee, I think there's some uncertainty about what the role is for the councillor. Who is, you know, do I have to go to every meeting, am I participating? What does the staff, what's the staff liaison do? And then there's also often a committee chair or a committee liaison, so we got like liaisons, like for some committees, just all over the place. Which I think is intended to be a good thing, a helpful thing, but it sometimes can result in sort of maybe people not feeling like they understand what the role is. So it would be helpful to have some understanding about what councillors are thinking about what their role is, because I know often staff will say to me, I don't know what I'm supposed to be doing with the council liaison, like, what are we doing here? So it is something that I think is well intended, but maybe just a little more discussion.
Go ahead, Steve.
I, now, I think now that we're on video, we get a lot more public response to these committees. Because one time, we couldn't get anybody to volunteer for these things. I've actually been grabbed in the hallway and, and dragged into the financial department, filed an application for the budget committee at five minutes to five years ago.
Yeah.
So that's the way it sort of was, and, and, but now we're getting lots of people, that's wonderful.
Yeah, I think so too.
So I, I think maybe it would be helpful to kind of have, when, have that, have that discussion about liaison and how people, how, how people approach that. So I think about, about this with, you know, a, a couple of things in mind. One of them is, hey, when I'm sitting, going to a committee, what do I bring back to the councillor? What do I sort of share with folks to kind of keep people apprised about what else is sort of percolating out there? That could be anything from events to, to issues, things people are working on, use the information to communicate when, when, when I talk, when I talk to folks. The other piece I think is really valuable here is to sit with, to sit with the committee and just talk to about where, like, use your experience, right? On committees that I sit on, sometimes when, when people are sort of stuck about, well, why do we do it that way? Or, you know, is that going to go over well with the rest of the council? You know, I can, I can talk to that because I sat with everybody long enough to know, well, that's probably not going to go against the kind of where, where the council wants to go with a certain thing and provide some sort of advice or refinement to work that the committee's doing. To me, I think it also could be, you know, there's some, there, there are some committees where you, maybe you can't make it. And to me, a good liaison role would be to regularly touch base with that, with that chair. And just be like, okay, what do you guys need? Is everybody moving the right way, right? What are you guys actually working on? So that we can make sure that these are all committees that advise us that ultimately, A, the citizens are having a great time on a committee, and B, it's sort of working towards a broader goal that we, we would like them to work towards.
Keeping liaisons as a helpful tool, this is what it's standing.
Correct.
Okay.
And we, we just have to, I don't know at, at what document we, we put it in, but we have to be clear that A, A, we don't have a vote. But B, right, like the role is really to sort of report back about that month to month, a quarter to quarter work. And sort of interface and be a, be a support structure for the, for the committees, committee chairs to ensure that, you know, that it is being productive.
Okay.
Several of the bodies actually want us to report to them too. About what's going on with the city.
And I think that's, and I, yeah, and I think sharing your information, right? That's where, what we, what we do best is, is share information that we know, go ahead, Corey.
I think there's also, there's some piece in there too about the relationship between the liaison and the staff who are staffing that committee. I don't know what that, I mean, I think it looks different in different ones, but I just feel like there's some sort of clarity to get to around that, whether it's defined by each one. When a, when a councillor becomes the liaison to understand, like, are you interacting with staff? Or are you interacting with the chair? Or if you're interacting with the chairs, because I think that it's all, that's been part of the swirl of not knowing whose role is what. If that makes any sense at all.
Joe. Oh, like your hand was towards her.
I think that's something that, you know, we can work on as staff to kind of give some direction about, especially if someone's new to taking over a committee. You know, I think then they learn that there's a council liaison and a committee chair, and they're like, whoa, you know, so I think we can help kind of frame that up a little more, so they can understand that it may, it may look different from the, for the historic commission than it would look for in the BPAC or whatever, and that's totally fine. So that's something I think on our end, we can firm up a little bit.
And I think as a group, the idea for us is probably less is more, right? Like, we want, like, you know, some people are brand new to doing this, we want to help them get to a point that they're being successful at chairing committees. But if everybody's sort of off and running and the committee's, right, like, you can, you can take about half a step back, you don't have to be involved in everything.
The, I think we were just back to the, the last slider, those are those committees. Your SPAC, BPAC, museum committee, arts commission, those types of groups, you know, do a wider variety of things for the city. I would say they have a really important interaction with, you know, they're a nice link between the community and city government. But they, they do different things, their selection process though is similar, it's all part of that fall batch recruitment that we've had for the last few years. Some tweaks with membership, and then some of these committees too, remember, will have like a non-voting member from Willamiamalan or the school district or whatever, to kind of bring that expertise in there. But that's sort of your last sort of kind of grouping of committees. I think that one thing that would be helpful to understand is if the selection process is working the way the council is seeing, or if there's some tweaks there that would make sense.
Joe's first, go Joe. So. Corey, do you have opinions? Go ahead, Joe.
So the, I mean, I, I thank you for putting those together, I'm sure it was difficult. And it may just be easier, again, going back to what I said earlier, is that members of one, of any committee and commission are discouraged and or, I guess discouraged are not used as on other committees, so we don't have that
Okay.
breadth of control from one person. Secondly, on page five, when it comes to the planning commission, it says, let's see, I don't know where I said, no, wrong one, on CDAC. It says six residents within UGB, which means that there's six people that may not be citizens of Springfield. So how many people total are on CDAC?
I think it's six residents, then the planning commission and the councillor who sits on the committee is my understanding, I think.
But there can't be a resident for just in the UGB and outside the city.
There, my understanding is, is that, that right now, the committee allows that they don't necessarily have to be residents within city limits. Yeah.
Which is my point.
Got it.
So the way it's written, we can have six non-residents on this committee.
I suppose theoretically, yeah.
So I think that that's a, a place that we need to define to make sure that we have citizens on this, on the committee. And yeah, if we want to allow one or two that are in the UGB and outside the city limits, I'm okay with, because we have that exception to other committees. But I think the way it's written, we should make sure that we have a certain number of actual citizens.
Okay. And then my, I, I'll, only, I guess caveat, I would say to that is the CDAC, if there are some federal regulations about the CDBG funds and that stuff.
Yeah, whatever, you know, obviously within guidelines, if there's something that, if there's something that says, no, we can't have that, which wouldn't make any sense at all.
For sure, okay.
And then moving down to page seven. Actually would be, that's one's accurate hit, where it comes to the selection process, where it's a resident property owner, other public agencies and local and local specialists with expertise, we made an exception with historic commission when we put this together in regards to some people that have some, because of the Washburn district and have some crazy expertise that are out in the field or come even from Corvallis, I think we had one person, but, but it's worded the same way on the museum arts SPAC and BPAC, which I never saw or heard of that exception allowed on those committees.
Okay.
So all those committees that I'm aware of require citizens to be on that. And there's this limited number of folks that are living in Eugene within the UGB. But we didn't allow for the, the specialists out of the area.
Yeah, this could be my, just formatting here and trying to get, trying to be a little too concise. So museum arts SPAC and BPAC, when I say resident, I think I'm talking about in city limits there. And then you're going to ha, and I'll confirm, and then I think it could be a resident or a property owner within city limits. And then the other public agencies, the local specialists and expertise, those folks often are ex officio.
Right, I just want, I mean, just, because if we're going to be nodding our head to this work and having some of those things outlined there that, that may not be reflective of what's there, I want to make sure I pulled that.
I guess what I, what I'm hearing from you is a importance on folks who are residents or property owners within city limits.
Absolutely.
More so than
People with dogs.
Area. Okay.
People with dogs in a fight.
Gotcha, okay.
Corey.
Okay, so I appreciate this being all laid out like this, it is super helpful. And also, we've been talking about this and thinking about it, and I think one of the things for me is the selection process, the way that we take all of these and do these interviews in public. And I think that there's a difference, and now seeing this, it's like, oh, this makes it really clear to me. I think that some of these, like the museum, the arts, the BPAC, all of those, I think the selection process could be done at the committee level and not, and maybe it's just a final approval either by the mayor or by council saying, here's the thing. Because I think that it's going to be a much more relevant and thorough selection process if you've got, and whether it's like guided by staff or what, and they put together a subcommittee, and then they interview folks, they choose them, and they come up with the finalists, as opposed to folks coming and answering the same three questions. And I think I've shared that, but not said it out in public, so that's the thing. The other piece around the selection process is I think we could look at those now that you, you know, you, I really appreciate how clear you were around the like the planning commission and the, the, the budget committee. Because those also, we say that we're generally the budget committee, we're appointing by, we, we go out, we try to find people for each ward. But in the end, we can just appoint people from wherever. So in my dream world, I would love for us to get really clear about either people can come from wherever, and it's going to be a much more political process of like whoever decides they want to put whoever. Or we are going to appoint by ward. Whether it's a direct appointment, which some bodies do, where each councillor gets a, a appointment, and they can make that appointment. Or we're going to, only, we're going to wait and appoint somebody who's from that ward to be part of those. So I just want to, that's my, my vote is to get clearer around that. And then the other piece for me around the selection process, and then I'll shush and let somebody have, is, is to, to just tighten it up. Make it relevant, make sure everybody's going through the same process, whatever we decide it is. As opposed to like, you know, like you said, you have five minutes, you apply, you're in, you know, that sort of thing, like, I want us to like, just sort of level up on the integrity and the process. Okay, now I'll shush.
Leonard, and then we'll go to Damian.
So I, I, I wanted to propose a tweak that was, goes a little bit in, a little bit in the same direction as councillor Pictionary, and in a way, the opposite direction. It's, what I wanted to suggest was that if we don't have enough people that are inside the growth boundary, then have an extension, and when it becomes clear that nobody from within the growth boundary is going to be applying to fill out all of the positions, then I would much, if I were given the choice between somebody qualified and credentialed from outside the growth boundary or nobody, I want those people on there. I mean, that.
The person with.
Yeah, the credentialed person. And it just seems to me that it's, there, it doesn't really serve anyone's interest not to have, not to have as many qualified people as we can. Provided that we've given an ample opportunity to people inside the growth boundary. Yeah, city, city limits, I'm sorry.
You mean city limits or growth.
I, I mean, city limits.
Okay.
Got it.
Yeah, that's right.
Damian.
Uh, yeah, so a lot of things, I mean, I think the first thing that doesn't sit well with me is that we've identified the planning and the budget commission as being the two that create a pipeline to being on council, those are also the most rigid as well as, you know, there, there are elements of legality, and so while that's cool, I mean, I, 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 I don't like that we're looking at those two boards as pipelines to being on city council. Because somebody on CDAC, somebody on his, history museum, something that has more of a cultural piece in a lot of ways would be just as if not more qualified. I, I mean, they can learn the other stuff, and so I, I really think we should rethink using that, because also what it does is create hierarchies. Oh, the, the budget and planning commission are great, and if you want to be a council, councillor or mayor or, or, or Jesus or something crazy like that, then you need to be on that, and so it kind of negates any, you know, greatness from some of the other committees, and so I'm, I'm, I'm against that completely. Two, I think one of the issues is, you know, we can talk about processes and stuff, but I don't think that boards and commission members even know their role, sometimes they don't know the role of the chair, staff liaison, I mean, and, and what it does, it creates confusion, and it creates frustration to people like, well, why am I on this, you know, board when I have not had any orientation? I am not aware of what role this person or that person. And I've even asked, you know, boards I've, or committees I've been on as a liaison, what is my role? And they had no idea, and I was referred to the staff person. Also with the staff person, I mean, I think we need to be very careful, because one, we don't want to occupy their time, i- if it's not in the job description, you're asking them to do something extra. So we need to be cognizant of that. But I, I, I just think that we need to look at the purpose of all of the boards. Because I remember Mary Lee said a long time ago, you know, when she first got on council, there weren't this many boards and commissions. And so how do we revalidate and provide some power to these boards and commission? How do we create an opportunity for people to excel and to grow? To where if they put that on their resume, not saying these people resume builders, but they put it on a resume, they can have an accomplishment, not a bullet, like attended meetings. Like, you know, we need to get past that. But we need to also figure out ways to provide some type of power to some of the chair, have them involved in the selection process. And create a, a good enough experience where people would want to potentially be on another board. Or, you know, continue to serve even if they're not on a board. Because I just don't think we're there yet, and I think we need to do a self-reflection to ask ourselves, you know, would you be on this board or commission if you didn't have to? And I think a lot of times the answer would be no. And so we need to take it to the streets and create a survey to talk to the staff, the council, the board and commission members to see how they feel. Because I think a lot of my problems came from conversations, not necessarily just mine. So I'm, I'm done talking, but yeah, I mean, I think we need to figure out ways to revalidate, and I think that's a period of self-reflection. Yeah, there we go, I'm done.
All right, Joe.
Excuse me, thank you, so in regards to comments by councillor Rodley in regards to selection. As a council, there was a time where the committees were uttering recommendations or even, and there wasn't placement, they were sending up recommendations, a council. We ran into several different roadblocks or several different issues regarding that. So the council as a whole said at the time, which I still concur with, is So the council as a whole said at the time, which I still concur with is that we want to uh, reserve that ability to pick who we wish to pick and place on those committees. And and I understand if there's there's people with expertise, one dot, they have the opportunity to convey that to us at the time of application. But I I definitely want to reserve the ability for council to make all appointments on committees. Uh, second is that uh with Damian, I I agree with that with the term. I was kind of surprised when I saw that term on these slides, pipeline. I really did. I was like, huh, we're stepping stones. I'm sorry. Um, I I I hadn't seen that before. It's it's been, you know, I think people look and Damian, it's it's, I think people look at those committees because they are uh very uh, they're pretty finite. There's some legal process, there's some more, uh, you know, there's different processes and much more official, so to speak, processes as compared to the much more laid backs type committees that are dealing with bikes and and art and things like that. So, but I think as far as uh, public perception, I agree with you. I think anybody that is involved in the city at whatever level should be looked at and and recruited from and and tried to bring up into the council. I don't think anybody would be, should be exempted from that. But I do disagree with using the those committees as as being known as stepping stones, but it's almost unavoidable because of the work they do. It's 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 kind of a placed where it's like, okay, we're gonna be heavily involved with a lot of things here, especially the planning commission every week. And you got a lot of complex things and you have some actual decisions that are being made. And that's very similar to what a counselor does um experience on the bench here. So I I can, you know, it's it's good on a resume. But as far as I don't, I wouldn't, I've never really termed them as stepping stones. I've I've always just looked at as a good experience on a resume and something definitely not to negate.
Yeah.
All right. So let's go through the couple of places where I hear agreement and then we can flesh out the places that uh, the places that we don't have that we may need to to talk through more of them. I I hear a lot of people saying that we really need roles and responsibilities, you know, and how that how that's delivered, but just sort of putting that in on a piece of paper where we are all agree about this is the role of the liaison, this is the role of the chair, and this is the role of the staff.
Yep.
Right? And I'm looking around and I'm seeing head nods about that one.
Um, and for that can be by committee though, right? I mean, like it it can look differently for different committees.
I think it could. Um, I would say if we could, if we could try to get to one basic, I guess, framework.
Okay.
Um, you know, that that could be, that could be important. Um, I think for, this is an assignment for the for um you know, I guess a comment for the rest of the council is the rest of the ca- you know, there's gonna be room for us to do our job in a way that makes sense to us based on our schedules and our experience. And so I don't wanna get too rigid here. I wanna make sure we kind of agree and go, okay, here here's kind of the play and let folks work, work the process the way, the way they know how to how to do it. Does that make sense? Okay. Um, the UGB process, I I think is a question that's always gotta be sort of flushed out, right? So I think there's two things I hear and, you know, um, one of them is that there's committees that from a regulatory perspective, you know, require that we include people from the UGB. And then there, you know, outside of those, if there's not a federal law or state law that requires it, that we would prefer folks that, you know, were residents or property owners of Springfield. Or in the in the place where we need require a technical skill. So um, and I think you identified a lot of those. Um, I think that's an open quite, like, I think that's, I think that's an, I think that's an open question. You wanna make your comment?
Yeah, as far as, I guess what I'm saying is I wanna heavily stress that the vast majority of the city members of any committee and commission within the city of Springfield need to be citizens of Springfield. The one or two outliers that may be necessary is is Counselor Staird mentioned that, you know, hey, we're we're scratching for some folks here and that we have this person that's very qualified, but they live you know, outside in the UGB or they live in Coburg or whatever. Then we can look at that and make an exception on a case by case basis, but not create spots for people that are outside the city and or outside the UGB, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think that makes sense to me. And that could be something that we can get at. And when we revise your operating policies, I think we can just update that language.
And that's that's what you're saying, right?
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, I I I wouldn't, I wouldn't rule out it being fifty fifty, but I mean, it would be, it should be the exception and not the rule.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm hearing you all say is you want variety and the and the breadth of people who serve on your committees. You want them to have a a stake in Springfield. So the way you, one way you demonstrate that is that you're a resident or a property owner in Springfield or within the UGB. And you may have some technical expertise that, you know, maybe you don't live in Springfield, but you're connected to whatever that there's and you're gonna be able to bring that to that committee. So I I get it.
That are, you know, our footnote to that is that some exceptions may be made for people that have shown or have an expertise in the field.
And some, some of these committees might have statutory things or you need to have.
Exactly, but
Okay.
Instead of putting a number to it, just say some exceptions can be made.
Okay.
Okay. It's in general, we're keeping the rule that is designed to guide the council to 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 pick a wide variety of folks that sit on that sit on committees. Yep, yep. And then um, I think like to Drake Damian's point, right? Like, you know, having a good orientation, you know, an onboarding plan. And then the place where I hear the most, I guess, disagreement and then all kind is around the appointment process. Personally, I'm in fa- like, I'm in favor of us appointing people that are on council committees. Um, and seeing folks um, and that, and that's just yeah, that that's just a product of, there are appointments and we've had this go sideways on us in the a a couple of times. But I think there's two questions here. One of them is, hey, do we wanna just take this question about how we appoint people and let I know there's some folks here that are interested in meeting as a subcommittee and let people flesh out, like, listen to the conversation and kind of flesh out a proposal because personally the batch process, like, I would be okay if we did something different than the batch process. Um, or do you guys wanna try to flush it out right now?
We'd been trying to speed the process up because council is running out of time. Was everything that we've been having to do. So we've condensed it. And I don't think what we're doing right now is is the right way to go. So uh, that's what I think about that. So we, I'd like to see if I find something a bit different.
Cory.
Yeah, and I'm open to either. I mean, we could, we could fight about it now or we could just have a committee and come back. But um, I think one of the things that's this one of the things I think about the current process, one, I I'm not crazy about the batch process. I would rather we just appointed in a way that works with the whole calendar and with the work of those committees. But um, secondly, is I I think if if we're, if we really are concerned about who are on these committees and having the council approve them. I think that there needs to be a more appropriate um, sort of vetting process as opposed to like, everybody fills out the same application. It then comes and we ask them the same three questions. It seems like the questions for being on the historic commission should be a little bit more nuanced than just how do you see your work in the, you know, we just say, we say, how do you see yourself contributing to the work of blank? So if there was a vetting process, then again, however you want to, now or later. If there was a way that the committee was actually helping to shape those, and if they come to council for a final interview and approval, so be it. But it just needs to be more, I think, just more tailored to the work of that committee so that people get more invested from the beginning.
Okay, Damian.
Um, yeah, so I mean, kind of related to Counselor always point. I mean, I think one thing about the application, we need to decide what's the standard? I mean, the applications are, it was pretty much the same when I flew out for council. Uh, and there was nothing that said, hey, upload a resume, but then there are other people who apply, you know, at the same time as I did, they had and and extra page, they had a resume. And so that can either, cause me personally, I stay within the box. And I think the last interviews we did, most people stayed within that little block. But then in the past, there were people who submitted a bunch of stuff. To me, you know, you don't submit what you're not asked for, but we need to figure out what we need to ask for. Do we wanna ask for a resume, a cover letter? Do we need to expand? Uh, kind of like with Counselor, I say, how do we, do we have addition, different questioning? But also do we give them more space? Uh, or do we say, hey, you got this space, I need you to keep it simple. Bottom line up front, uh, kiss bluff method, you know, uh, because th- there's an inequity across if we don't just say, hey, this is all we want, or hey, you're allowed to do this. But also, if we do allow people to add stuff, we can't use that as a gig against somebody else. And so that's something we need to think about, the actual application itself and what will be accepted and won't, what won't be.
Leonard.
Um, with uh, with regard to what Counselor Pitts just said, I I certainly don't think we should discourage cover sheets or resumes. I think that it would militate against um younger people participating in this process. And uh, for that reason, I'm I'm against having it as a hard and fast rule.
Let let's do this, right? I know there was an interest in a, in doing the subcommittee, like, if if folks, and I believe it was Damian, Cory and Leonard.
Yes.
Um, you know, and and if there are more more folks, if everybody wants to talk about it, we can, we can have, you know, we can schedule more work session time about it. But like ta- maybe have them meet and kind of hash out of at least a framing of this.
Yeah.
And to, and then let us dive into it, right? Because knowing that, and sort of, I guess, I'm looking at you, you folks is like encompassing kind of what we 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 had talked about, right? Like, generally, right? Like, we we need to see, we need to see folks. You know, what are the questions you guys wanna ask, right? And what is some of those other process type type things that from an appointment perspective? And it sounds like, and I'm gonna, and I'm gonna is that we're open to ditching the batch recruitment, probably not this cycle. Because we're right in the middle of it now. Like, I see AJ over there going, no, 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 no. Um, but probably going, but probably going into twenty three. Go ahead, Joe.
So a couple of things on the, whatever you're creating in regards to the committees folks and how it's the recruitment process, whatnot, I think part of the committee, not just a listener to the committee or scribe, would be staff. So staff can provide input to us for us that works out. What what is staff's preferences? Because they're the ones that have to deal with the workload and they're the ones that have to try to get, you know, the timelines, et cetera. So if I was to be listening for recommendations and trying to craft something, I would definitely include staff on a, on a uh eye to eye level.
Okay, that's good input.
Can we also include, I mean, i- if we're gonna do a subcommittee? Uh, you know, if we don't include the voices of those who are currently on committees or serving those positions, then we're pretty much making the decision for them. And I think we need to try to avoid that. Cause we need to ask them how they're feeling, because like I said, these conversations have been had. Uh, and we we need to include them. And I think it could be a qualitative survey that's anonymous. Uh, or something, but we we can't do this without seeking their input.
Cory, go ahead.
I like both of these ideas. One, I think it'll be important to have staff as part of that subcommittee to let us know what can and can't be done. And Damian's mentioned this a few times, and I think a survey of folks who are a part of, and maybe the last year were part of these boards and commissions would make some sense.
Like a survey monkey.
Yeah.
Matt, like, get out there. Okay.
All right.
Get as much input as possible. Yeah.
So here, I think here's gonna be the the challenge. And then we'll dive into the one question I think we can provide some direction on, right? Like, one of them is, is really, we don't need to make this into a science project, right? Like, so um, I'm like, I'm good if if we plan on putting out a survey, right? I'm good trying to limit this to sort of one que- you know, one really thing to sort of flesh out. I just wanna make sure that we kind of have a clear starting and and stopping point because our time with Damian's running, running short. And I want him to make sure that he sees it, sees it, sees it to an end. And Damian's making that like, we gotta hurry up through this. Um, you know, I, yeah, we can bring some more folks in, get you guys sort of the 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 feedback that you need. Really, I think the outcomes are looking for a revamped uh, a revamped appointment process. Saying that, knowing that it would come in front of council. And then whatever that, whatever that would look like. And I'm open to unique questions per per person, you know, and I'm sure you'll find something out of a survey, but I'm just being a little conscientious about not to overbuild this.
Okay. All right. Well, that helps me.
All right, one, okay, so one last question that I had, and then I'll throw it open because we're only fifteen minutes over. So you know, th- this is what happens when we, you know, we punt off the 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 committee conversation that we've been trying to have for about six months. The one thing we haven't answered and provided direction is what we wanna do about the budget issue by yeah, budget committee issue that's specific by ward, right? And again, if you guys wanna wait and and fight it out now, uh, or fight it out later, I think we just need to choose what direction that we're going. Because it it is a point of um, uh, it's a, it is a stress point among among the council.
Okay.
Go ahead, Leonard.
Well, I, I think it's my ward that's most uh affected by this. And I gotta say, I mean, I tried to get people to volunteer. Uh, I think we volunteer, I I think we did in interview a couple of people. Um, and, you know, if there's nobody, if there's nobody who applies, what do we do? I mean, it seems like we need to fill the position. So I'm not, I I'm not a um, a hardliner on putting one from each ward onto the budget committee. I had, I I just, I think it's counterproductive in the long run. But I do think it should be a priority.
Joe.
I I see you, I see your point for sure. I I I've prefer that budget committee members come from each ward. I've got to have a voice from different parts of the city. That being said, I know it's sometimes extremely hard to recruit somebody to sit on a budget committee. Um, I've been able to do it since two thousand four. So I'm not unique. It's it's, it takes work and it, you really gotta get out there and and you can, you can find them, but it takes a lot of effort. And I think the counselors should be willing to put that effort forward because after all, the person that they find is also representing the ward in which they're supposed to represent. And so it's it's a huge responsibility and it's, and it's um, and to me, it's very important responsibility. And I think that budget committee members should come from each board. That being, again, that being said, you runs a thing is like, okay, well, there is a potential, which it has happened before in the past that we don't have somebody. So then, you know, kind of like saying, okay, well then let's just yeah, leave the spot open as far as I'm concerned. Cory.
Well, and I think yes, and we also have had in the last round was one of those where we had people from wards who were then out appointed by people from a different ward. So people were like, you know, we'd rather have this person over here, even though you're from this ward. So I think that that's another thing that we need to sort of, that's why I'm like, we need to get clear about that, that are we going to prioritize people from the ward? Or are we going to do everybody in a batch and choose the three people that the the majority of council selects? So that's where I'm like, how do we do, how does that, how do we do that? Cause I also would like to see, if we're gonna be by ward, we should be by ward.
Oh, well, I'm I'm hearing a lot of by wards, right? So this may just be Mary Bridget helps us or reminds us what we, what we said to ourselves. Go ahead, Damian.
So one thing that we need to think about is how can we better let, I mean, how can we let people know better what ward they're in, even when I you know, took off as a, I had double check to make sure. And then when I looked at the map, it was still kind of confusing. Uh, and so, I mean, you know, and I've mentioned this before, the wards don't necessarily have an identity. Uh, and so with that being said, people, I guarantee you, if you were to walk up to somebody and they would ask what ward they're in, they'd have no idea. Uh, especially if they haven't been engaged or they're new. Uh, or I mean, a lot of times if they come from a specific identity that they don't see represented. And so how can we either create identity around wards? I mean, thi- this is this is top level stuff, but you know, it's plenty, you see, how do we create identity around wards where people know? You know, I mean, those cities I lived in, when you say where you're from, you know, people know exactly where it is, there's an identity. And I just don't think that really exists here. And so if we wanna have somebody by ward that's gonna speak for the ward, then we need to determine what is the identity of each ward and figure out ways to let people on, know what boundaries are, because it's really hard to tell by the maps that are currently online.
Okay. So I'm I'm hearing we're keeping the ward, the preference for wards, right? That we sort of talked about it and we all, we're all on the same page. And I know at least seven people that are sitting in this room that know what ward they're in, but we gotta get the other sixty thousand on the same page. Thank you, Mary Bridget.
All right, thank you.
All right, next item, we have climate friendly and equitable communities rulemaking process parking requirements, and I'm already exhausted with Sandy Belson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
This is staffer Sophie here.
No, I I think it was Sandy for the evening.
Oh, Sandy, okay.
I believe Sophie is online.
Yes. So Sophie McGinley is online. She has prepared the PowerPoint and has helped on this project as. As Christina Kraz, our local expert on the climate friendly equitable rules. Uh, my name is Sandy Belson. I'm the comprehensive planning manager.
Okay, before you get us all like fired up about how upset we are with the state, um, I'm gonna look to Christina and. Have remind, have Christina remind us what conversation are we having? Are we having the lawsuit conversation? Or are we having the, we have to do this until the rest?
Same convert, same guidance from the last session on this two, uh, two weeks ago, the, we are appealing, planning to appeal. Um, these rules as a city along with several, um, almost a dozen other local governments around the state of Oregon. So we recognize that there are significant frustrating points, challenges. Counterproductive requirements in these rules, all of that will be in our petition for review, um, and briefing. Um, as part of the appeal, so we are not talking about those aspects of the rules this evening. Um, we are focused on. Implementing in the meantime, my advice to the council has been we have to move forward with making decisions around implementation. Because we don't have the time or the luxury of waiting, and so that's the focus for tonight. Um, certainly, if you have concerns about, um, you know, legal issues with these rules or other things that may be relevant to the appeal. I'm really happy to have those conversations one on one outside the council meeting.
All right, thanks, Christina. Back to you, Sandy.
Sure thing. So I did give an a broad overview of the rules at your September twenty sixth meeting. Um, the objective for tonight is to provide a little bit closer look at the parking component of the administrative rules. That were adopted in July, and I, tonight I am seeking direction. So we are looking at how we need to approach phase two of the parking requirements. So, uh, in this presentation, I will provide some background context, the project timeline, we'll talk about phase one. And then the, um, phase two and what the options are within phase two. So a little bit of background, we have made progress, um, in Springfield, laying the groundwork for parking rules. Our transportation system plan was adopted in twenty fourteen and includes policies that are explicitly intended to reduce dependence. On the single occupancy vehicles, very similar to the climate goals in the climate friendly equitable communities rules. From twenty sixteen to twenty twenty, Springfield engaged with the community in an extensive process to figure out the right balance of tools. For Springfield to meet these objectives. Springfield was stricter than the C F E C, that's the climate from the equitable communities. So I'm gonna shorten it to C F E C. So Springfield was stricter than the C F E C rules require in some instances and more lenient in others. Uh, Springfield lowered the minimum parking requirements, added parking maximums. And increased opportunities for developers to right-size parking requirements. A few of these provisions, though not all of them, will help Springfield comply with the C F E C rule requirements. Such as Springfield's existing maximum parking requirements, our bicycle parking standards, and maximum block length requirements. So just to make sure we're understanding what we mean by these different terms, I'm gonna go over a couple of slides. One is parking minimums. So parking minimums require people who develop property to include a certain number of. On-site parking spaces. So this is a mandatory requirement for onsite parking. They are just that, they are a minimum, so developments may include more than the minimum parking allowed. Next slide. Our parking maximums. So the parking maximums. Are a ceiling, whereas the parking minimums are a floor. So parking maximums, which Springfield has adopted. Limit the amount of onsite parking that can be required for a development. So this timeline, uh, shows the two phases of parking. Rule implementation along with the electrical vehicle conduits, which is that middle component. So the first phase deadline is quickly approaching. And then the second phase is broader in scope and requires the council to make choices now in order to meet the implementation deadline. So let's move on to the next slide. So phase one, this affects. Parking near transit and then certain uses, um, and this will go into effect, um, at the end of this year. Excellent. So for the near transit piece, um, so this map is showing. Properties that are within half a mile of a frequent transit corridor. And so in our case, frequent transit corridors. Means Route eleven and MX line. So within that half a mile of those two frequent. Um, transit lines, we are not allowed to require any minimum parking for new development or redevelopment. Also, for certain uses, we cannot mandate more than one space per unit for residential developments with more than one unit. And there are, we cannot require any onsite parking for the following uses. Facilities and homes designed to serve people with disabilities, childcare facilities, single-room occupancy housing. Residential units smaller than seven hundred fifty square feet, affordable housing or publicly supported housing that meets certain definitions. Emergency and transitional shelters for people experiencing homelessness and domestic violence shelters. So for those uses, even those uses that may occur outside of that half a mile, we are not allowed to require any onsite parking.
Hey, Sandy, could you go back to the map for a second? So I had a question, and you can't, I don't know that you can see the shading in this. Um, so when you look, the map that I have in the packet is got. Uh, is got, it shaded is within half a mile along sort of west D as you get out towards the path. And I want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. Is that? By the way, the map looks, is that sort of in scope for these parking standards because of the, uh. Because of the frequent transit line that's on Franklin, even though there's no access point? Okay, so, so we, it's really draw, draw with a, uh. With a broad brush, right? That we have areas that are not actually accessible to a transit line in the city that would be in scope for this.
Yeah, I'll look to Christina to see if she has any detail on that. Or this part.
Um, we may be able to remove that area specifically because we can use either walking distance or straight line distance. But one of the nuances is that we're not allowed to use walking distance to actually get on to the bus lines. We're not allowed to measure walking distance from stops. We have to measure walking distance from the corridor. So even if there's not an existing stop. So not for West D, but for other parts of Springfield, there may not be a stop within a half mile, but if you can get to the corridor, like if you can watch. If you're half mile from being able to watch the bus go by.
Okay.
Um, then, then that has to be included. So we may be able to fine tune some of that on the other, where the river is a natural barrier. Uh, but that half mile is going to grab a lot from the, from Pioneer Parkway. So it's a little bit, there is a little bit of that area that may come off. And this was a draft map. It was really just like locked it, put down some blobs around, um, those corridors.
So when we, when we do the precision part, it's gonna, it's gonna refine itself. Perfect. Corey.
Okay, so, and I might be jumping ahead, but I, you, you, I just want, I just want to sit for a minute. Um, because the, 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 the no mandates for affordable units, childcare facilities. Unit for people with disabilities shelters, that just, as y'all know, because I've already just, oh, that just doesn't sit well with me. Because you have got folks who, um, it just, it's just, it's the, the impact on folks who are. Um, have less income is going to be bigger than folks have more, which is not equity. But, um, on the next page, it says that this does not directly affect accessible parking. So what is the, what is the explanation around the, um, facilities for people with disabilities? But there, there still are some federal mandates for accessible parking. So how, how does that live in the same parking lot, so to speak?
So, um, the number of accessible parking spaces that you need to provide is a percentage of the total. So if a developer is providing ten parking spaces, then a percentage, I think it's around, probably in that case, would be one. Um, space would need to be required to be ADA accessible. So. These, if you, even though the city is not requiring parking, people may still provide onsite parking. And so at least one, and then depending on how many you provide. Of those parking spaces need to be ADA accessible.
But since we're setting no minimums, they could choose to do no parking, which would mean no accessible parking. Okay, just wanted to say that out loud. And and that point was raised during the rulemaking and that they are aware of that. It's also causing some issues with ODOT, um, as well. ODOT has flagged that. Um, we may look for rule revisions there, um, or that may be an issue that gets sorted out in litigation, but it is a point of, um. Was raised during the rulemaking process. Thank you.
Joe.
I think the standard you're talking about is one in twenty-five spaces. If there's twenty-five spaces, one must be handicapped, and must be so many feet wide, etc.
Yeah, and they, they, I think they ratcheted down a little bit when you get to like hundreds of parking spaces, their standards are different, but generally, that's about the standard.
One in twenty-five. So, but also, and. Corey brings up an excellent point, which was already stirring around in my brains in regards to accessible parking. And, um, ADA requirements in regards to landlords. Now you have a person that, for example, and just like with a person with a, a service animal. You can't discriminate against renting to that person, etc., based on no animal policies, etc. That's one thing. But now let's go back to a person that's disabled and depends upon a wheelchair. And so can you deny, can you tell that person, no, or you can rent here, but you can't park here, because you can't be mobile here, because it doesn't allow for that. So will the landlord now be open for lawsuit or open for, uh, litigation based on this rule? And how will this, will the city protect the landlord, property owner, or what?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, I, I, you're, we're talking about ADA accessibility, and you have a, you're a property owner. And you rent that property.
Correct.
You say you're one of the properties that say, oh, no part, no parking spot was built here. I'm, I bought this property after this rule comes into effect, the developer built a place with no parking places. Now I've got some rental open openings, run an application, say, okay, I want some renters. And, oh, I have a person that's got a disability that depends upon mobility.
I got you.
I can't provide that now because of this law, so there is there protections for the landlord from litigation.
Well, I think in that case, the law would be indirectly, um, leading to that result, because it would have been the private property. The pri- the predecessor's decision not to provide parking, nothing would necessarily prevent a property owner from adding parking later.
It can be required to, though, that's what I'm saying.
It couldn't be required to. So I think that unfortunately would just be something that the, the subsequent property owner would have to figure out. I don't know the answer to that. I don't think the city would be liable. Um, we do, just as an aside, we do, um, sign on street. If we, if there's on-street parking provided, then people can go through a process with operations to paint, paint a blue curb or to mark on-street parking as ADA. It doesn't mean it's reserved for a resident, like a particular resident.
Right.
But it, but we can and have signed ADA on-street parking when it's adjacent to underparked residential development. But I'm not sure that there's really any protection, um, for a landlord in a situation that you're, that you're talking about, but I also don't think there's liability for this.
No, I'm not really assuming that there would be some liability, I'm just bringing the point up. What thoughts would go through people's heads, and and you have this, the same problem when you have developers, and I've always, and everybody knows that I'm. Pro-developer, I mean, pro-building, I'm all for that, always have been. But now there's a place where there's a spot here where the developers see this, and they're gonna look at this and say, this is, this is a cash cow for them. This is gonna be pretty amazing for them to be able to build without having the expense of parking. So now I'm going on the other side by saying. So are we making it, is it, you know, at the, at the expense of, of climate equity thing or whatever it is? To provide, really providing some huge economic benefit to developers, which we say we want to make some development. But now what kind of aftermath are we creating? What kind of wake are we creating behind us into livability for all persons? And how are we gonna, how are those people, are people looking at those problems in the future? What, what the ramifications can be to the city?
Well, I think we're starting to think about what those ramifications would be. So even if we take, um. When we get to the options, um, the simplest option, there will be ramifications, no matter what option we choose on for phase two. There will be ramifications.
Uh, so Leonard, if you, why don't you go and then we'll try to get our, our back on track to the, to the actual options.
I can be brief on, um, so. I, when, when I first heard about this program and that we were considering a lawsuit against it, I, I kept hearing it was an unfunded mandate. And now looking at these parking rules and the, the phase one parking rules. It looks to me like it's mostly preventing us from enforcing a mandate. Is that accurate?
Option one would be, um, that we wouldn't.
We wouldn't enforce parking mandates. So I'm, I'm struggling with how this is gonna be a great expense to the city.
The rules are. Hundred and thirty-six pages of different topics, and this is one of those topics. So in this area, it prevents us from enforcing a parking mandate, but the cup, the rules as a whole cover. Um, you know, hundred and thirty-six pages of content, and some of those are mandates on the city to do.
I was just asking about this part. This, this would be less expensive for the city, right?
It depends on which option you choose.
Well, it, so Leonard, I think you're, there's three particular options. You're just talking about the first dot. The first phase, which is, hey, specific, in specific areas, you can't, you can't, you can't come up with parking mandates. When we get into sort of option two and option three, we're, we're gonna choose things that are gonna cost money.
Okay, I mean, I get it, one, one thing at a time, but I'm just making a general observation about these rules.
Yes.
Okay.
Corey.
I think part of, part of the unfunded part is how much sort of time and staff and all of that that it's gonna take to do the things. I mean, you're right, if we say we're not gonna enforce them, it's not gonna cost us any money. It's prob, it's gonna impact the livability of folks who live in Spring, live and work and play and all that in Springfield. But I mean, I, I get what you're saying.
I'm happy to answer questions about the lawsuit outside of the meeting.
Yeah.
And, and to share more information about the basis, um, for the appeal.
Leonard, well, why don't you call Christina later? Uh, it's, it's a lot more complicated than that, but. All right, Corey, are you done?
Sort of, yeah, go ahead.
All right. All right, we're, we're gonna try to hold, you know, hold our questions until we get to the hard part, because that's coming in a couple of slides. Sandy.
So these rules do not retroactively apply to existing development. They only apply to new development or redevelopment. Um, developers, I said, could still provide parking onsite, even though the city would not require it. They do not interfere with our existing parking maximums. Um, and we've talked about the ADA. So for phase one, staff is proposing that. We would approve applications for new development or redevelopment that meet the criteria, um, that are submitted after December thirty-first. Um, we would provide internal staff training to our counterstaff and the development review team as to what these new rules are. And we would not, um, per staff recommendation, undertake any code amendments at this time. Um, and so developers and staff would refer to the state's, um, rules unless, um. Until later on, and at some point in the future, may we, we may decide to amend our development code to recognize the state's rules. For phase two. Whereas, sorry, where, where phase one was targeted on the transit corridors and specific uses, phase two applies citywide. Um, and the state has provided some options for the implementation of phase two. So what we are calling option one is the do-nothing approach. This option would require the elimination of all parking minimums citywide. Options two and three would allow the city to keep some of our existing parking regulations. But we would have to make modifications and add new requirements and programming. So options two and three would require significant code amendments, funding and staffing, which I will detail a little bit. Um, more in fu- future slides. The extent and complexity of these rules make them difficult to understand and fully grasp the implications of implementation. Um, and so I can't say that all of the options under, or all of the nuances of options two and three. or all of the nuances of options two and three, we fully understand or know that they are fully legal. Um, so this slide is provided by the state to outline, what we have before us, and then I'm going to take you into a little bit more detail in choosing a pathway.
So Sandy, just could you say that one more time? If you know option one's probably legal, but you don't know that all parts of option two and option three are legal.
Correct.
Specifically, option two, I don't believe the state has provided us with any legal analysis on whether some of the options there are within local government legal authority related to the legislature. For example.
From the state, right?
Yes. Again, we are appealing these rules. Or the, some of the options, some of the, Sandy will get into this. Option two is like a pick three out of five, and we don't know if all five of those would stand up to legal challenge if we were appealed on the basis of other state statutes.
Okay, so.
And we haven't done that. I, I just haven't had time to do that legal research.
I, thi- this is us chuckling about like the enigma wrapped in a contradiction, which this conversation is. So if we choose, if, if we choose an option tonight, right, we're going, going to assume that the, right, like more information could come, come up in the next couple of weeks and that, that would help clarify what we're supposed to do, right? So, okay.
If you choose option two or three, I think that, that would mean staff would go back, do some more homework, consult with other jurisdictions who are also struggling with some of these same questions and come back with you, to you with more information. If, if you choose to go down either option two or option three.
Okay, that, and that's the best we're going to be able to do right now. That's perfect. Okay.
So.
Let's keep going.
Um, so again, this encapsulates some, option one is the do nothing approach would result in no minimum parking requirement citywide. So we would take, um, staff recommends that we take an approach similar to what I had recommended for phase one, in which we would just refer people to the statewide rules and provide developers and staff the applicable resources to approve the applications, even if the applicant does not include the onsite parking that is required by our code. Uh, so if council directs us to follow option one, the already adopted parking maximums would remain in place, but the minimums would no longer apply. Options two and three are a little bit more involved and require additional regulations and programming. So if we do choose option two or three, we would need to start work on those, um, immediately.
Joe.
So I, I, I mean, for ease and making things happy and friendly and easy for everyone, option one sounds great. However, option twos and threes bring up some very, very important points to me. But the hesitation of whether they're legal or not brings up a big thing inside of me. So if I have, I've got this clear, you're asking us to look at option one, but also asking us to make a decision based on two and three without all the information.
Well, I guess I'm saying, based on what you do know, are you comfortable with option one? If not, then which of the, which does option two or option three look better to you? Do you have a preference at this point? Or do you need more information and what other information would that be to make a decision on option two or three?
I mean, I like some of the, some of these points in option two and three. For example, the reduced parking board burdens, reduced mandates based on shared parking, solar panels, EV charging, car sharing, parking space availability, et cetera. Those, those standards to me, if we can have any change or any flexibility there and those options two and three provide that flexi- flexibility, why would I want to shut that door now?
So with option one, we would have no parking mandate anywhere. So we would, all of this would be covered under option one. I would also say that we do currently have, um, reductions for, um, required parking based on shared parking. On-street parking, garage parking. Um, we don't necessarily have standards related to solar panels, EV charging.
Right.
But we do have very flexible, um, reduction policies that the council adopted under the right size parking reductions. So essentially any good evidence that someone brings in that they should have to get, do less parking than what the code minimum is, um, staff can approve less parking than.
Well, and, and I'm not for less parking. Sorry. So, so does every part of this document that you've provided this, these options, are they, is there any part of it that we're going beyond which the state has shoved down our throats? I know you already mentioned today that, that some of our standards are beyond what these are, right?
So.
So is any part of this new document?
No, no, no. This document is only what is strictly mandated by the rules under the, under the options. When we, um, when the city did the TSP code implementation project from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty, there were sort of, we had policy, there are policies on the Springfield TSP that are written with nearly identical policy language as the goal of the climate-friendly equitable communities rules. The council during that, you'll remember that extensive process.
Yeah.
Made trade-offs and said, well, we like this thing. We don't want to do this and, and kind of found that balance. Um, so in finding that balance for Springfield, there were some ways that our current code is stricter than we would have to be under the C-FEC rules and, and less strict in other ways. But these slides only represent what would be mandated to do to be in compliance with the C-FEC rules, depending on the option the council takes.
Damian.
Okay, a couple of questions. But so I guess my first thing, so with point one, option one, does it mean that somebody can, a developer can decide to have zero parking spots or they can have two or three per unit? I mean, we'll, we'll say like that, that they can have none or they can have more than the state recommends. I- i- is that, is that true?
So for residential dwelling, we do not currently have any parking maximums. So as you say, the developer could provide zero, one, two, five, however many parking spaces that developer wanted to provide per unit, they would have that choice.
While meeting density, while meeting the density requirements typically for, for certain properties.
Okay, another question that, that, that I have. I mean, I, I'm just curious about, a- and I can look this up on my own, but you know, I hear things like shared parking and street parking and just based on where I live, there is so-called street parking, but what it does, it limits the view uh, to where when you pull out, you can easily get hit. Now I will see, you know, multiple potential accidents and things like that. And, and I mean, our, our, our infrastructure, our streets aren't, aren't wide enough to have this street parking. And a- a- and so to me, it, it, it can be a safety issue. And so I'm just curious what the street parking even mean, because I've seen people park in all kinds of spots because there is no parking in apartment complexes. It just seems like me, the people who are making these decisions or provide these options are people who are comfortable here, who live in houses uh, or who don't have an accessibility to parking issue. And so I'm just a little, I don't know. I mean, I'm a little taken back by the, the state of Oregon in general not loving parking, but then also not increasing mass transit. And I think there are greater issues, uh, that we need to look at. Cause I mean, right now, I don't think I can make a decision because I just think that there's so many other things that people aren't thinking about. And if we're going to look at this from the bigger picture angle, then I don't see how we could even make a decision or even think about this because there's so many missing pieces as far as I'm concerned.
Uh, yeah. I, well said, Damian. Um, so I think we got a couple more slides and I know we're all trying to dive into what direction to give. So let's just, if we can just hold it together and let Sandy get through the, uh, next couple of slides, we can dive into trying to figure out some direction here.
Jay, you can go ahead. I think they've had a chance to look at that one. So this one, um, this is option two. And so these are parking management policies. And you would choose three out of the five. You could unbundle parking for residential units. So unbundle means that the landlord would charge separately for the parking that is onsite from the rental unit. Um, you could do that for both residential and commercial. Um, there could be a flexible commute benefit for, for businesses in which, um, if there are businesses with more than fifty employees, they would be able to, um, compensate those who do not come to work in their own vehicle. Um, and that's like to offset the cost of providing the onsite parking that they do provide for the other employees. You could tax the revenue on parking lots, and this is one of the, those questionable um, policies that's being discussed amongst other cities as to, is this even really legal? Um, and you could require no more than half a parking space per unit in multifamily development for, in those areas where we still have the option of requiring some onsite parking.
That, that's require no more, right? I mean, that number five there.
Right. They could still provide more if the developer wanted to provide more.
So, uh, I've got a question about unbundling parking. Uh, under the way the rules are written, right? Uh, if I was a developer, I could unbundle, like I could char- that would allow me to sort of charge the current rent that I have and then generate additional revenue for renting, you know, I guess onsite parking, right? And there's not a requirement in the law that would, uh, would allow you to over, re- require that somebody reduce their rents to sort of compensate. Like, um, you know, because they're sort of now financing it, right? Okay, so, all right.
And we would have to, if you picked that out, one of those, one of those, um, as one of the three, we would have to require that all units had that, um, that all parking spaces in all units had that, um, requirement. And I do not know, to preempt the question that some of you may be thinking, I do not know how ADA factors into that. Um, and I do not know whether there's, there would be a federally, the federal law would require an exception for ADA parking spaces or if we would be required to enforce a policy that requires residents who need part, disabled parking spaces to also pay market rate for those spaces. I, I don't know the answer to that question. If, if it's one you're thinking.
I think we're all thinking a lot, a lot of questions, you know, and I, and I'm reading that, thinking about how, you know, rent burdens on our households that rent in the city as well. So Leonard, and then we'll go back to Corey.
Yeah, well, I, I, I'm just looking at the three out of the five and can we be, I mean, ADA aside, can we fair, be fairly sure that all five of those would be legal to adapt?
No, no, we just don't, we don't know what three, we don't know which, I guess we would say, I don't know which three. I specifically am not sure of the legality on a sales tax on parking lot revenue. Um, or what are the legal mechanisms? I guess the more specific, to be more specific, I don't know what the legal mechanism is um, to do that lawfully in the state of Oregon. Um, it, and I don't know of any, we were not able to find any other city in the state of Oregon that has done that to look to as a model, which is typically how new, um, revenue generating programs get, um, sort of implemented as you look to the city that's done that first.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, it just seems to me that until we can ascertain the legality of all of this, that it would be, uh, we, we'd be delinquent in proceeding right now.
Um, I appreciate Damian saying that we don't have enough information to make a decision. However, I know that that's my job is to make a decision. Um, so, uh, I, I'm going to support staff's recommendation for number one, but I just want to go on record one more time of saying that this is, this really, until it gets fixed, is really just exacerbating the inequities of who can afford, who can afford a place where they have parking, who can afford electric vehicles, who can afford to pay extra parking, who can afford and who can, is able-bodied enough to be able to walk a half mile or a half mile plus to a, to a, a bus station. And like Damian said, you know, we've, we've got people pushing back really hard against, in, investing in the infrastructure of mass transit while we're doing this. I just want to say, until we fix it, I will go with one.
Okay, hang on. Lo- lo- let's let her talk, finish the one slide and then we'll get into it. So I'll put you down for a.
Yeah.
All right.
A reluctant one.
So options three is to reduce parking and create a parking, one or more parking districts. So, um, in this case, there would be a variety of specific uses for which we could not require onsite parking. Um, small sites, vacant buildings, his studios and one-bedroom units, historic buildings, leader Oregon reach code developments. Um, we would not be able to require additional parking when there are changes of use, redevelopments or expansions of over thirty percent. Um, we would have to adopt parking maximums. Again, we already have some. We'd have to look to see if we need to adopt some more. Um, and there would be no parking allowed to be required. Parking could be allowed, um, but we couldn't require it for any place within a half a mile walking distance of the climate-friendly areas. And we would need to designate, um, a district to manage the on-street residential parking. So basically, um, at this point, what staff is here for, just to reiterate, is for that, where we have an option, which would be implemented at the end of June, meaning we need to decide now if we're going to go for option two or three to be able to get the rules ready to be adopted and in place by the end of June. Are you interested in learning more about option two or three? Um, and if so, what interests you there? Or are you comfortable going with staff's recommendation of option one?
Joe.
So I'm looking at where you came up with the title, option one, or I mean, option two and option three. Now I see an option two, that if you do the unbundled parking, if someone wants to develop a apartment complex and put a parking garage across the alley for the tenants, but he can char- he can sell those buildings independently for whoever wants to buy them. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm not sure where you're going yet.
Well, I'm leading you. So we have that, I mean, that's the crazy option there. And we also have the option of taxing parking, et cetera. And then we go to option three, which has got other nuances to it. So what, this one says reduce parking and parking district, and the other one is parking management policies. So is that part, uh, was that ciphered out of the state mandate? Meaning this can only be in this.
AJ, could you go back to the, the, this slide that has that graph?
I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, is that the state, that state mandate create something where the cities would have, okay, if you want to not do this, these are what you have to look at.
The state basically said repeal all your parking mandates. Or if you don't want to do that, you have to either comply with one rule or the other rule, and you have to pick between them. And the one rule, which is option two, says pick three out of five of these.
Okay.
And you comply there. Um, and you will, what's not noted here is that when it's time to designate climate-friendly areas, if we have not repealed parking mandates either citywide or for those climate-friendly areas, there will be additional requirements in the climate-friendly areas um, that we'll have to figure out how to comply. That can be a separate decision because that repeat that for the climate-friendly areas, but there's another layer even. Um, but that deadline isn't approaching us as quickly. So it's, so it's basically, they said, if you didn't repeal all your parking mandates or not enforce your parking mandates, then you have to pick between two options, and we're calling them option two and option three. And option two is policies, new policies. And then option three is as applied to Springfield based on geography and uses, it's really just limiting it to most meaningfully, we could continue to control parking requirements for most residential areas or many, I wouldn't say most, but many residential areas and some industrial development, but almost all of our commercial, um, area would not, would fall under, um, the restriction on any parking mandate. So we would have effectively no parking mandates under option three, except for some industrial development and some residential development.
And so the point of, point of making or trying to understand or grasp is that if the state came up with these options for us, meaning, okay, if you don't want to do this, you've got this option or this option. That's what I'm hearing. But I also heard from the same people that these may not be legal, but that's the list that the state gave us. So.
Yeah, the nuances that state agencies can't contradict state legislative statute. And these rules came from a state agency and we are not sure that it was vetted in terms of whether or how. I guess it was more of how these options would be lawful under state statute. So I don't, and I can do that. If you're interested in learning more about option two, I can do that research and try to come up with um, some guidance on that. But if the council was interested, was, you know, very interested in just option one, um, then we would not dedicate staff time to doing that research because it wouldn't be, um, influencing the council's decision. But if you feel that it would influence your decision, very happy to dig into that further and do some more research on those, on those requirements. The, the state just didn't, the state agency that adopted these rules didn't. The the state just didn't, the state agency that adopted these rules didn't provide us with any. Guidance on how, yeah, guidance or legal basis or the theories or or model programs or ordinances to implement these. So um we have to do that research ourselves at this point.
Well, it's hard, the only part that, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to, I'm sorry. Being a pain here, but I got some real issues with this, but that, but I'm trying to get at is, is okay, we got these managed from the state. I only, I only wanna be part of a decision that is the least onerous on our public. And which includes the citizens and which includes how people are parking, how they can park our, our people with disabilities. The, which, which impacts the, the least negative impact to those our people is the option I want. And if option one is negatively impacting some of these smaller communities of disabled folks, et cetera, or even people that are building properties. And laughing to the bank. Because they don't have to put parking in there to take care of our citizens. Then you know what, you know what I'm saying, that's my quandary is that I, I wanna make sure what's whatever their decision I'm making or being part of is, is going to be the. The most beneficial to the citizens and not staff. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Makes a lot of sense.
Leonard.
Well, it it seems to me that this might be a time to apply Occam's razor, I mean, we have several Occam's razor. Alright. Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll back up a little bit, um when, when you have three different possible paths forward. And they might all have the same result, you go with the simplest one and that's where uh option one is right now.
It's not the same result, that's the problem.
Well, it could be though.
Well, and and I think that's, well, could we back up a second, could somebody explain one more time what a parking management district is?
I can try to do that.
I I think it's similar to what we have downtown already. Um where you're limiting um the amount of time that people can be parked, there could be permits involved. So. Um you're trying to. Manage the public asset in a more equitable way.
So it would be fair to say that if I, that if we went with option three, right, there would be no parking requirements for any commercial district. And then we would have at least one residential parking district out there where we would have no parking requirements for new development. And then if you parked on the street that we would have some sort of management, you'd have to probably get a permit.
I think that parking, residential parking district would be a parking district where we issue permits for on-street parking. And not uh wouldn't be related to the mandates for the private parking side of things. Um I, what I'm not sure of is whether our um existing parking program through downtown, I don't believe. Our existing parking program for downtown qualifies for either the parking benefit district. Or as a residential parking district, so it would have to be either a modification of that program or a new program to meet that requirement.
Okay, so I think here, here's my, my opinion, I think option three seems a little too, like a little too cute by half. Um I, the question I have about option one, really, uh the two concerns I have are. The first one is that the question about ADA, right, because I think that's a real question that we have to get answered before we, you know, before we figure out how to go forward. The second question that I have is when I think about the city, if we went with option one, we don't have transit service to every part in the city and it is not. There are parts of the city that are not close to um, not close to a transit line um at all. Um and I would be concerned about creating sort of islands of where people don't have either a car, they don't have an access, you know. Maybe there's not bike and pet infrastructure out there, right, like there, there's a predominant of issues that would be related to just sort of throwing the. Uh you know, throwing the gate wide open on this, so I think I have that set of questions before I could tell you whether or not I would. I guess comfortable would be the wrong term here, but that we could start down that option one category. On the flip side, I think understanding some, the legality and the pluses and minuses a little bit about option two would probably be helpful to us. Um because I, you know, that, that way we could sort of find some sort of balance here. Because I just don't know that we have enough information.
Is the council interested in all five of those potential option twos? For example, the one that I'm most concerned about is the sales tax on parking lot revenue. Um is that an option the council is interested in exploring, because if the council isn't interested in exploring that option, even if you went with option two, then. I won't research it, but I will research it if the council is interested in learning more about that specifically.
Steve.
Good things, one is you mentioned, no, there's not enough transit in Springfield. There's lots of money for buses out there, but the labor costs drivers for those buses is what is killing it right now. I don't know how we're gonna address that, but that's a big deal. And the other is, the main goal of this is to reduce our use of automobiles. And used to be a long range, but right now it's short range, we're trying to make it happen very quickly and this, this is the process they're forcing us into to do that.
Um, okay, so I'm looking around and I see, I'm not seeing anybody interested in a sales tax on, 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 on parking. Um do we, is it really these five? Or is it, or do we have an option to craft something else?
There is no other option, it is pick, pick three of those five.
Okay.
No, there's no further, this is supposed to be ample flexibility.
Okay. Okay.
It is just those five, there is no other or something similar that would have an equal effect or burden on us to come up with it. Um under either option, that, this is it.
Yeah, my, my concern about the list on option two, is there some of those that would could cause people to pay more rent and, and I'm really concerned about that. But that, that doesn't mean, but I think knowing that ADA option, that ADA question would be, would be an important one to figure out. How to, how to craft this. Does anybody have other?
Go ahead, Joe. One more comment, sorry, plenty of them tonight, sorry. But we talk about equitable, equitable housing and what the state is doing and what we're actually being forced to be part of. Is alienating an entire part of our community that can of, can't afford more. And creating a, some sort of Shangri-La with less carbon and less gas and less vehicles. That is not obtainable for people with lower incomes. And now we're all of a sudden, we get this, we're part of some sort of thing that's gonna create this even greater chasm between. Almost classes of people and it is really, as you can tell, is very irritating to me. So. I mean, I'm sorry. We're not, I mean, it's just.
It's gonna make money off this, it's not gonna be.
It's all, all of the flipping dollar and it's just ridiculous and, and it sickens me to be part of this, part of a decision that. That creates even more of that problem. So, but yeah, I, that ADA thing, I would definitely need to like to have answered.
I do wanna clarify, one of the reasons that staff recommends option one, um it, that we essentially take a hands-off approach in a way. One of the reasons I recommend that to Sandy. Is because we are appealing these rules for the reasons that the council has highlighted. Uh because, not because we're opposed to doing the work to figure out how to make our community more climate friendly. But because it requires the council to do it in a way that may not actually result in a more climate friendly Springfield or may. Adversely impact Springfield from an equity perspective, and if you take option one, the, one of the benefits of that approach is that leaves our code. Intact as it is now, and so if a court does in the future grant us more flexibility. To figure out how to implement this in a way that does work for Springfield, there are not programs or requirements that need to be unwound. Um we can start from the code as it exists today, and so just to give a little bit of that context, I'm not sure if that was as clear from the memo. And, and so that's one of the reasons. We could certainly, if you wanna take option two or three, unwind those um or alter them or modify them um to. Better match Springfield if the state gives us that opportunity to do that. Um but it would probably be easier from a regulatory and legal perspective to do that if you, if you chose option one.
And go ahead.
And the my, my, and, and you mentioned that too, and, and I frankly would like Springfield to be known. Not for being current climate friendly, but for being everybody friendly first as a priority. And the climate can take second seat as far as I'm concerned, so any of these rules that make put people second. I'm not, I don't support, so I'm just throwing it out there, sorry.
So let me turn the question kind of, or I guess the, kind of a, a statement about where I'm going with option one. And I know from a staff work perspective that option one obvi- is the easiest. If there's a way to get to option one, like and adopt something that would, would protect, you know, if we get, you know. We get sort of forced down this path that would sort of protect an ADA requirement, that could be, that would be appealable to me, you know, would be interesting to me.
I, I did look at the definition of parking mandate and there is. There is language in the rule that says um a parking mandate doesn't include ADA parking space requirements. So it may, so we may have some, some workaround there to have, potentially have the council adopt something that references. A requirement to provide ADA parking, it may be then that the only parking that gets constructed for certain developments is marked ADA spots. I think logically, we can see that that may become an enforcement nightmare, it may not, you know, we, we may see a lot of, a lot more. People parking in ADA spots without placards, um which is, you know, it takes additional enforcement resources to respond to those calls. Um it is the city um police department, community resource officers that respond to those. But that may be an option, I think we can look at that, um figure out if other cities, what other cities are doing. Um as they're trying to grapple with these rules. And, and figure out where those options are around ADA um for the parking mandates. Um as well as if you took the unbundled parking approach, how ADA may factor into that.
Yeah, and that would be perfect, alright, does any, do you guys have enough direction here?
So I wanna clarify, are, are you looking at all three options at this point or have we eliminated any?
I, I, I think three's done, like I don't see any interest around three.
So we're looking at option two, it's more information.
Yeah, yeah. Right, so which one, which ones have, you know, potential legal issues, maybe some pluses in my, like some, you know, some pluses and minus is to each one of those. To just help us gauge some of this, um and then the question about, about ADA.
Sure.
But three's out. Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. It's a lot of work and, and I appreciate that.
Alright, anybody else before we switch topics? The climate friendly is not gonna be known for on-time meetings. I do, I do wanna say thank you for our staff, I know where you see a lot of frustration from us and that is clearly pointed at the state. That is not pointed at uh the work the staff's doing, so tha- thank you for being patient with us and walking us through this and at least laughing at our jokes. Alright, last item for the evening, SDC waiver to encourage affordable home ownership.
With no parking.
Alright, um good evening, everyone, thanks for sticking with it. Uh my name is Katie Carroll and I'm the city's housing analyst. Um so the item I have for you tonight is consideration of a program to waive system development charges or SDCs. For affordable homeownership housing. Um so for the benefit of any members of the public who might still be listening in. Um system development charges or SDCs are charges that are imposed on development to accumulate funding. Needed to provide sufficient capacity and infrastructure for that development. So the city collects these for stormwater, local wastewater and transportation. So a program to waive SDC charges means that the city would be collecting fewer funds for capital projects in those areas. Um waiving SDCs can be a way to incentivize types of development that might not otherwise happen by reducing the upfront cost of doing that development. And in the case of affordable homeownership housing, it can be a way to um reduce the uh price. For, to help developers reduce the price for income qualified households trying to purchase that housing. Um so a little bit of background on this, in May, council provided direction to staff to design a program to do this. And then in September, uh staff reviewed, sorry, not staff, council reviewed some draft guidelines for the program and provided feedback to staff. And then also gave some additional direction to staff to return with um information on the city's SDC revenues. So that council could try and figure out how to cap this program. Um so tonight, I'm first gonna give a quick overview of the draft guidelines as they are in your packet tonight, which have been updated based on that direction in September. Um and then I'll go over the city's SDC revenues and staff's recommendation for capping the program and then I have two questions for council. Alright, so um the draft program guidelines, so again, this is a program that's targeted towards affordable homeownership. So it would not apply to affordable rental housing. Uh based on council's direction, this would be offered, um anyone could apply for it, so both nonprofit and private developers could apply. Um housing units granted a waiver would have to be affordable for a period of at least five years. And then any housing unit receiving the waiver would have to be sold to households earning no more than eighty percent. Of the area median income and that was based on council's direction uh last meeting as well. And then finally, also based on council's direction, the program would be offered under two compliance pathways to minimize administration. And so those compliance pathways are basically uh two different ways that someone could be found eligible for the waiver, which would have different requirements. And determine whether it was given as a grant or a forgivable loan. Um and there are more details on that particular one in both the draft program guidelines and then there's an additional attachment that I think I called the. Compliance pathway explanation document, um that's in your packet tonight. Okay, so moving on to the city's SDC revenues. Um so what this chart is showing are the city's SDC revenues over the last six fiscal years. Um and this is broken out by those three different funds that we collect SDCs in. Um so the largest portion of revenues has gone towards local wastewater and that's represented between. Um seventy-one and seventy-nine percent of revenue collected every year. And then the smallest portion has gone towards stormwater. Um the average revenue over these last six fiscal years has been four million seven hundred thirty-two thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars. Um but as you can see, the last two fiscal years, revenue has been notably higher. Staff does think this trend uh will continue for at least a couple more years, given residential projects like Mark Colomettos.
So can I ask a.
Yeah.
Clarifying question, that's excluding the parks, right?
Correct, so these are just city SDC, so that's also not MWMCs.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, and so um I wanted to give you all an idea of how a waiver program might impact. Um the city's SDC funds, um so if council will remember at our last discussion on this, I mentioned. Um Habitat for Humanities Fisher Village Project, so that is an affordable homeownership project that Habitat is currently working on. In Springfield that will add twelve single unit dwellings for purchase by income qualified households when it's done. Um so based on the SDC's habitat has already paid for units in this project. Um staff is estimating that if Habitat were to apply and be found eligible for a waiver. The city could waive up to a hundred thousand dollars for um ST, in SDCs for the remaining units in that project. So I took that hundred thousand dollars and then based on the percentage that Habitat has already paid to each of those funds for its permitted units. Kind of broke that hundred thousand dollars out, so council could see um how that might impact those different fund areas. And then I'll just point out that that yellow slice of the pie um is for administration, so for units that. Um have already been permitted, Habitat paid just under five percent of what the total they paid went towards administration. And then I think there was a question from council last time about a technology fee. Um the city does not collect a technology fee for SDCs.
Thank you.
Yep, um so staff's recommendation for this program is to cap the waiver. At three hundred thousand dollars or three years, whichever uh comes first. And staff's not recommending that council sets uh sort of a per year maximum within that, like up to a hundred thousand dollars per year. So how this would work is that when either the three hundred thousand dollars was waived or the three years had been reached, whichever one of those came sooner. Uh that would stop the program and trigger a check-in with council to figure out, should this program continue? And if so, are any adjustments needed to the program guidelines? And so some of the reasoning um behind staff's recommendation here, so if we were to waive about a hundred thousand dollars a year over those three years. That would represent around two percent of that average amount that we've collected over the last six years, so the four point seven three four. Approximately. Staff's not recommending setting kind of the per year limit within that to provide a little bit of additional flexibility to developers. About when they would apply and given sort of the short three-year period. Um the impact to the city's SDC funds would not be significantly different to do it this time.
Joe.
Thank you, I appreciate the information that you provided in this packet and I've read every bit of it and it made a lot of sense. and answered a lot of my questions, and I appreciate that very much.
I'm glad.
I, I support the proposal of three hundred thousand dollars or three years, whichever comes first. And I also understand that if we put it at a hundred, you know, something so much per year, that that could remove some of the flexibility in this program, so I wouldn't want to do that. But I would wanna see what kind of impact it is, and it, and it, I mean, as far as I don't wanna see this go into perpetuity. I would like to give this a shot, see what happens without the expectation that this is something that's going to go every three years or some sort of renewal thing or whatever I needed. We gotta do this program, take a look at it. Then if it is a great program and it really did do some very good things, then I would be totally willing to look at it again. But, but I like the three hundred thousand. And I guess the three, the three-year thing almost doesn't matter, but, but three years, if it's, if it's not used up in three years, then it's time to go on to another project and, and end it.
And if I could respond to some thought behind the three-year piece, I think it's also an opportunity to evaluate if we're not getting applications. Is there a way that we need to change the guidelines?
Or, or trash the whole idea.
All right, Leonard.
Oh, we spent a lot of time hashing this out. I mean, I think it was a good compromise.
We go to the next slide, AJ. So it sounds like we're getting some discussion on that first question, but just wanna flag that second question as well. If council has any further feedback on the draft guidelines? Cause I think staff's hope would be after this meeting that we could return with updated guidelines based on any additional direction and then a resolution.
Does anybody have any additional feedback? I think we're, we're good to go here. I would just ask that we continue to monitor conversations at the state level. I know programs like this are beginning to come up in other cities, and, you know, there may be, you know, an opportunity to engage in either legislation or see whatever, what other folks are, are thinking about. Because the, these types of programs are a big discussion point.
We've given direction and you've done a good job of following.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you. That was the last item, so we are going to adjourn for the evening. Have a good night, everybody.